Howdy, everyone, and Happy New Year. Today is Tuesday, January ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, and the time is six P M. We're here for the regular session of the Kappa L City Council. We do have a quorum present, so I'm calling the meeting to order. We will be convening into executive session in the first-floor conference room. At the end of the executive session, I'll come back out and announce our work session, at which time the public will be invited to join us. Thank you very much.
I'm great, Mayor. How are you? Mayor, I'm really excited about this meeting. It's probably happening right now.
Excuse me, everybody. This is executive session, section five fifty-one oh eighty-seven of the Texas Government Code. I believe Ms. Hurley has some things to tell us.
Yay!
I like it.
Thank you. I'll get that.
She won the lottery. Everybody.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We are here tonight to discuss...
Good afternoon. The time is six fourteen P M. We have adjourned from executive session, and we're moving into work session in the first-floor conference room. The public is invited. Be welcome to join us. Thank you very much.
Like my mom never, my mom never married.
She was on holiday?
Yeah.
She said she wasn't.
Yeah.
That was actually...
Our two teams.
We would require them...
One day I'll be there.
Just keep on waiting, my friend. Just keep on waiting.
One day.
A little bit longer. I like my...
You got a good one. You're right next to it. You're right next to Kate.
Yes. I'm good when I walk in late. I'm good when I walk in early.
All right, everybody. The time is six seven, six seventeen P M. We're in work session.
Hi, Mayor.
Councilmember Neville's.
Mr., how are you?
Thank you. I'm good. We only have three items on the work session tonight. The first one is discussion regarding the agenda items. I do have a couple of questions for you guys. We've got two presentations to do. One is for the Korean-American Day. Mayor Protem, I'm sure, is going to want to say something or be involved with that one.
Sure.
Is anybody else going to want to say anything on that one? All right, then. The second one is we have a proclamation for Michael Higgins. This guy ran the marathon in Antarctica and won. I mean, he was the winner. And so we got a proclamation for him. Would anybody want to say anything about that? Other than that, I'm going to say I couldn't even run a marathon at sea level in Texas. I don't know how he did it.
That's amazing.
Minus twenty degrees at sea.
No doubt.
And I learned how to pronounce catatopic winds, so that was a good thing. Anybody need to say anything with him?
No, but that's amazing.
Just don't race him. Okay. What's that?
I said maybe he's only dead in cold weather.
Well, no. He... Actually, I looked into it. The Antarctic Marathon is one of seven marathons that you can run that where you run a marathon in every continent, and that's kind of the hardest one. So we could ask him if he plans to run. They run in spike shoes. It's not like you're running in running shoes. It's...
Like old traction.
It's pretty...
Holy smoke!
It's pretty... Yeah, and they're not... They've got thermals, and I mean, it's... It's cold down there.
Full marriage.
Yeah.
Maybe a bird.
Okay. All right. I'm looking forward to meeting him, actually. Consent agenda, don't have anything there? We do have item number... The Smart City Board is going to be postponed until the January twenty-third meeting at their request. Other... And oh, oh, oh. Also, we've got a runoff for the... Item number twelve is a runoff for the Dallas Central Appraisal District. There was no clear winner, so there's a runoff, and I'm assuming that we will let that one go as we did the first time around. And that's all I've got. Anybody have any... Joe?
I did have a couple of questions about a couple of things, two things on the consent agenda. This really for my identification as well as just in general. So like on item D, the seventeen Ford Interceptor and Ford Explorer, the Ford Explorer vehicles. So when we put something like this in there that says we're buying it through the TIPS purchasing cooperative, I mean, what is that?
I can answer that question. It's an interlocal government cooperative purchasing entity that we sign a contract with and then go out for bids. So it satisfies our bid requirement, and it keeps us from having to rebid that and get a pretty good locked-in price. And so it's an easy thing for cities, but it's authorized under state law for us to enter into interlocal cooperation agreements. You'll see it's on the agenda for buy board, TIPS, H V A C, or whatever that is.
Okay. Buy board is the other one I had to address.
So it's just another intergovernmental cooperation purchasing agreement that the city has written up, an entity that is formed for the purpose of going out and getting bids to state local government.
But by doing it through like a TIPS or a buy board, are we also getting the better pricing from the larger, the larger interlocal group?
Yeah, I mean, I think they look at various interlocal cooperation contracts and pick the best price for each one of those. So if we'd have gotten a better price from H V A C, they would be the buy...
Okay.
Interlocal that we would buy those. So you'll see other vehicles that are actually purchased from other interlocal government cooperation contracts.
So we're using these sorts of services or agreements to get better pricing, better leverage when we're buying this kind of stuff?
And it's more cost efficient, since we don't have to put the bid specs together and go through all that, and then send it out to bid and wait, and we get those better prices because we can buy it now.
Okay. Super. Thanks so much, Paul. That's all I had, Mayor.
Said two of them.
The buy board is highly efficient in answering questions.
Okay.
Consent agenda F. I don't have any issue with either of these items. I do have a question on the source of funds. These two in particular were both being paid out of general fund and not accounted for in infrastructure or capital replacement, and I was... My question is, I don't even know who that would be to. I don't know if it's to you, Mike, or what, but these are... Were these not budgeted for, or...
Yeah. This was in our list of strategic reserves. Remember, we talked about the twenty-five million? These were... Both were projects identified in that list of strategic reserves. So that's why it's fund balance.
Okay, so they have been planned for. Okay. I was thinking maybe these would come up, or maybe they should have been in the Capital Reserve or something, but they had been planned for. It just happened to be out of the general fund.
Yeah, the general fund fund balance, yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. Thanks.
Anything else? All right. Going on to item B. This is a discussion regarding the A R P Act allocation. Tracy?
Thank you, Mayor. Council, I am pleased to be here tonight to talk about my favorite topic, the American Rescue Plan Act, and provide an update to you. The purpose of my briefing tonight is to seek your direction regarding the use of the unobligated ARP balance that we have as a function of some completed projects that were completed for less money, and so it is a great problem to have. I will review with you the ARP timeline in terms of when the federal government has told us we must do certain things. We'll walk you through the, just a review of the completed projects. I'll walk you through kind of a status on our current obligations that are in progress right now, and then I will provide to you a summary of the proposed projects that we are providing for your consideration tonight for the unallocated balance. So on the timeline, we received our ten point two million, ten point two million dollars in ARP funding back in two different payments in August and September of two thousand and twenty-one. We have until December two thousand and twenty-four to obligate all of those funds, and essentially what that means is we have to have all of those funds either under contract, agreement, or purchase order by that time. Otherwise, all of those funds that are unobligated get sent back to the federal government. And then for all of those that are, those funds that are obligated, we have until December two thousand and twenty-six to get all of the dollars out the door. Anything not expended by December two thousand and twenty-six also gets sent back. We have been operating under the premise that our goal is to make sure that every dollar that was allocated to the city of Kappa L gets spent for the benefit of our community, and so that is why we are here today, instead of just kind of allowing this balance to just sit there. So this is just a list of all of the projects that have already been a hundred percent completed to date. If you look at that list, we've... It totals almost five million dollars, so just about half of the total allocation has already been completed and done. And then this is the list of our current obligations and the projects that are underway right now. So Metrocrest Services, we are in year two of three for that contract for those enhanced services. We are in year two of two for the Woven Clinic. For Magnolia Park Trail, we have finally made it through the last hurdle on all of the state approvals that were required, and we will be ready to bid that in the next month or so for construction. The parking lot covers for the P D vehicles, that will be on your agenda for approval at the January twenty-third council meeting, and that will be... So if you'll recall, that was originally budgeted at one-ten, and that was going to get not quite all of the parking lot, but that was kind of what we had allocated based on the current priorities at the time. What I am proposing right now is that we do all of it at one time for one-fifty-four, and that's what we will be bringing to you on January twenty-third. We have fire station repairs for six hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. This has absolutely nothing to do with Station Five, so this is building repairs to the existing facilities that we have right now, so things like bathroom repairs and the bathroom tiles in the shower areas. It's H V A C work. It's kind of general repairs and things that needed to be done around the stations. Our fiber expansion project is underway. The very first project that we did with that was to run new fiber underground to serve the Heritage Park for the Historic Society. East Lake D cell lane is also underway. We are resubmitting our plans so that we can refine some of the locations on the utilities in the plans that we originally submitted. It does have an, it has an asterisk next to that. The total budget remains two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You'll notice that I have only listed fifty in our share of that, and that is a function of our public work staff reaching out to COG and identifying some alternate funding in which COG will do an eighty-twenty cost share with us, and so due to those cost savings, the ARPA share of that project will only be fifty thousand dollars with COG picking up the rest. Okay, so we'll do a little bit of math. Our total ARP funding was just over two, ten point two million dollars. If you net out the total for completed projects and our currently underway projects, that leaves us with one million, about just short of one eight point eight-five million dollars. The list of proposed projects that I will provide a really quick summary, high-level summary to you this evening, totals one point six six five, and we do, that does propose a remaining balance of a hundred and seventy-eight thousand. I will talk to you at the very end of the presentation around kind of what, what the plan is for that. But I do want to walk you through the list. So this, this list here on this slide is what we are proposing for your consideration for the unobligated balance. So the first item on this list is the Magnolia Park bid flexibility. So I mentioned that we are ready to go on the bids. All of our experience since we originally developed that budget has told us that there is a fairly good chance that those bids are going to be more than the one point five million dollars that we have in our budget. The six hundred and fifty thousand dollars is a placeholder that allows the council flexibility should we receive a lowest bid that is higher than one point five million dollars. We believe the six fifty is fairly conservative, so we do not believe that we're going to need all of that, but that is a placeholder so that we do not have to pull money from other funds in order to move forward with the Magnolia Park bid.
How far back is that one point five million estimate for Magnolia? How far back does that go?
It was January of twenty-two. Let me research that for you.
Yeah, it's, it's... That's... A couple of years is, is good.
It's the past six, eight months.
Oh, we got it updated a P C then.
It was June, or it was two four zero three.
Oh, that's right. We did update, update that this past summer for retreat when we talked about cost escalations.
Okay. That was what I was worried about.
Yes.
You got it covered. Thank you.
The next item on the list is security improvements, and these are improvements for, to improve building safety for the exterior envelope of all city facilities. So this will include rekeying all the physical keys for all of the city facilities. It will include panic button replacement, and it will include the digital card reader technology for the doors at all of the city facilities. This would not include any camera replacement at any of those facilities. That is covered in our E S capital replacement button.
And it doesn't cover the proposed change in the front, I guess, from...
No, no. Separate and apart. This is really to better secure the exterior envelope. The next item on here is the Life Safety Park Concrete Ceiling and Restriping. So this is for the, all of the parking structures as well, or parking surfaces, as well as all of the concrete surfaces in Life Safety Park, which is where we do all of our youth education. All of that concrete is in need of crack sealing, and it's all in need of striping. This, that has not been done since we constructed the facility. The next item is refurbishment and modernization of the command vehicle. So this was a police vehicle that was purchased in two thousand and nineteen. The proposed utilization and the way we have utilized that particular piece of equipment since two thousand and nineteen has really been focused on primarily the public, I'm sorry, the police department side of our public safety houses. What we are proposing is a more unified strategy to deploy and utilize that asset so that we have additional opportunities to use it, because it is really a... If we work our way through this refurbishment, there are a lot of opportunities under the umbrella of our emergency management team, which kind of coordinates both sides of the public safety responses to have better utilization. So what this would include is updating all of the I T equipment that's in there. It would help us have better functionality. So for example, the, the camera, that telescoping camera that's at the top, which provides the folks in the command vehicle really good eyes on the ground at the event. Unfortunately, if I'm sitting over here at the police station, I'm unable to get that live feed from the command vehicle. So this would help update some equipment for things like that. It would add functionality to the inside, so it wouldn't increase the space necessarily to cram more people into it. It would make the space more functional. So if you're sitting in the back of the vehicle, there are no plugs, monitors, or anything. So you can come in and have a laptop and function, but if you want to pull up anything to see another camera view, if you want to pull up a map, if you want to pull up any of your facial recognition, you literally cannot do that unless you want to have aid windows open on your laptop. So this would provide some more monitors and connectivity for all of the equipment that would be back there. So those are some examples of some of the upgrades and modernization that we would be looking at for that vehicle.
What?
Yes.
Do you have a, do you know how many hours a year that that vehicle is used right now? And how many hours a year it would be used if we did the modernization?
So I can tell you for this past year, the deployments that we used for that vehicle were the Fourth of July and the St. Anne's Carnival. Moving forward, if we, well, if we look back, one of the incidents that I think would, we would have benefited from deploying that vehicle, but it would not have benefited us really in its current configuration. So we had the, the missing student several months back. Would have been really nice to take that and put that into the parking lot close to where we were focused, but the technology would not have, in its current configuration, would not have really helped us as much as it will once we, once we make these upgrades. So in terms of how many more hours would we be using that? I don't know that I can project that. I don't know if our, our chiefs... So I have a cadre of folks back here who know a lot more about all of the things I am providing high-level information around, so would you like to write any additional insight on that?
I would just provide that it would improve the use as a joint command post. And some recent examples that we didn't have that, that we would have used it, just recently had this gas explosion, long duration, multiple-day incident. Having a joint command post on, on the scene would improve everybody to be able to function. Just this week, we had a bomb threat that lasted for hours. We needed a joint command post on scene to deal with. If there would have been more agencies that had to get involved with something like that, it would give us a place to function. We have missing children, there are missing people, not just in the special events. If there's a fatality accident and there's weather involved, it requires a long investigation process, and it gives the officers and the firefighters a place to see some comfort out of the weather for long... So there's a, there's a, there's a big need for it. We just, it's just not capable to do that right now. Mayor, pardon me.
And I understand what you're just saying, but just going back to what Mayor was talking about, are we talking about five years, ten years? Because spending a hundred thousand dollars, are we going to be looking at replacing it after five years? Or are we down further from ten years?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm just going based on our current fleet replacement model. I know that the large fire apparatus, it's on a ten-year minimum replacement schedule.
And what year are we on?
I think we're on year four, but functionality, it hasn't been utilized very much because it hasn't been capable to meet the needs.
So most likely in six years, we could think about replacing the vehicle or...
Maybe fully evaluate the chassis, I mean, the components. We would evaluate them as the need would come up, but as far as the functionality of the vehicle, the mileage is down. I think that would determine whether or not I would think it would probably have extended life just because it's not used as often.
And the upgrade that we're talking about right now, is that just for that one particular command vehicle, or is it another vehicle that's fairly maneuvered that we could actually implement and have a longer use?
Right. To purchase that vehicle is, is a, is a lot more money. I'm not sure what we have in it right now. John, this is a unique, we don't have anything else like it. Yeah, yeah.
No, I, I guess it's a...
An actual vehicle.
Big R D.
Yeah. So this is really just covering the technology upgrade and also...
One of those fixed stations.
Yeah. This would be the technology upgrade, the modders, the ability to have internet access, camera communications, radios. It's not capable to do that right now. It's basically a shell.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, are you saying the mobile unit that we have as a command post is not sufficient?
That's correct. Well, it's, it's not sufficient for what we should, what, it's, for what we, it could be capable of doing.
When did we purchase the...
Twenty-nineteen.
And it was primarily at, for the police department, so that's why the Chief Richardson is saying it's not adequate. Yeah, it was primarily set up for the police department, and what we're proposing is that it's use C Y, Police Fire EMS, and coordinated through our emergency management department. And what was the cost when we bought it in two thousand and nineteen?
A little ballpark, I think it was around three hundred and fifty thousand. I think so.
Anything else on that one?
In today's market, that would probably, that number would be extremely higher than that.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, sure.
So in your opinion, if we make this investment of $100,000 to modernize the, the technology, would we be up to kind of the level of what we could buy now new on the market?
I'm not sure if I understand your question. If we were to buy, after we spend $100,000 to replace that unit, it would be extremely expensive, yes.
Right, but what we're doing to modernize, is it going to have the same capabilities of something that we could buy on the market new today?
Yes, that's why we're asking for the refurbishment, yes.
So we'd take this $350,000 investment we already had, and spend another $100,000, and we bring it up to modern capabilities? Otherwise, it's become obsolete.
Well, the way these integrators work is they buy the vehicle and then they put the equipment in it.
Yeah.
So we've already got the vehicle, we're just putting the equipment. So I would paraphrase the chief and say, yes, we will be as good as something that you go. The only thing that's not going to be new is the actual chassis.
Right.
So we have to replace all technologies inside?
No. So right now, the police technol, I'm going to call it technology. So there's a police radio in there, but there's no fire agents. So if, if we're using a joint command, they're going to have to work off a handset or something. They, they don't have radio equipment in there. And then the computer stuff that we need is that doesn't exist. The police department, we use it, we'd have to get on there with laptops and air cards.
So when we had the events at Andrew Brown Park, I seen them park there, so we didn't have any communication with the fire department?
Well, they were in the, they're in there, but they're operating with a radio, correct?
Yeah, it was a radio, it was limited.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so the next item is the residential rehabilitation grants. And I don't want to steal the thunder of the Ford Board, but this is an item that the Ford Board is currently working through. And so they will be bringing this to you for consideration here very soon. And we do have money in the five-year forecast, but it is not now. So it would be in some of the out-years. What this initial pilot program funding would provide is the opportunity to kind of get a head start. So once, once the Ford Board is ready, and if that is a program that you as the council would like us to pursue, we have flexibility to start now instead of waiting on that funding through the five-year forecast. The next two items are strategy assessments. The first one is around our, our development. So the economic development landscape is changing. And what this would do is help us take a long-range look at what our future development strategy and options could be in our community. It would assist us in understanding the financial modeling around various development scenarios, almost kind of like from an ROI perspective. If this is the type of development that we want in this community, what will it cost in order to get that development, support that development, and then what then is that development providing back in the way of revenue? It will help us understand what that ROI and development revenue will look like from a financial standpoint. That will be the foundation around which then, from the comp plan update, that is in the general fund, fund balance. It's a, one of the assigned projects there. It would help provide some foundational information there for, in terms of a data point. It would provide another data point for you as a council. When we go out to the community from the community engagement perspective, when the community says, we want these types of things, then you as the council understand from a financial standpoint what will be required in order to make those things happen. And that's what, this is what that development strategy assessment would provide to us. The second assessment is around the electric vehicle fleet infrastructure. And so this would help us understand and formulate a strategy around how best to support the changing nature of our city's fleet. There is always going to be a certain percentage of our fleet that will never be candidates for electric vehicles. But there is a large portion of our vehicles that is very well-suited for electric vehicles. It's in-town driving, nobody's chasing anybody, we're just kind of driving through residential streets. We're not having to haul heavy things. So this assessment would help us understand and plan for over the next five to 10 years the infrastructure needs that are required to support that transition if we were to move to an increasingly electric vehicle fleet. So in closing, I am seeking some direction from council on this list. I provide it kind of as a, a starting point of conversation and consideration for, for the council. But I am looking for some direction. If there's things on here that absolutely not, we do not want to fund that. That's, that is valuable feedback. If there are things on here, for sure, I would like to include for art funding, that is valuable as well. I'm happy to answer any other questions, and I've got all my subject matter experts over here to help me as well.
P G?
Thank you, Mayor. Tracy, thanks for the update.
Yes.
The Magnolia Park project was on hold pending some approval from Army Corps of Engineers. Is that lifted?
Yes, so we have gotten our final antiquities survey review by the state completed, and we are ready to bid.
So the 1.6 million for Magnolia Park, did we approve that budget?
It's 1.5.
1.5, did we approve?
In ARP.
So we are adding, in addition to 1.5, 650,000?
From ARP, yes, sir. That would be, that's, that's the proposal. Knowing that in June, this past June, our latest engineer's estimate was $2 million-ish.
Just kind of a clarification, make sure I understand what's going on. So if, for example, the joint command capacity for the command vehicle, and obviously it makes sense for the police and fire to be able to communicate on the same system during a time of crisis. But these are largely tax dollars that have gone out of this community that now the federal government is offering to grant back to this community, right? Because of, through the ARPA program to, in theory at least, remedy economic loss occasion by the pandemic.
Correct, yes.
So, so if we don't use the ARPA funds, and we decide, and they're lost, as you've indicated, they're, at some point, they, they go away. And we decide, knowing truth, we really do want to have a joint command capacity for that vehicle, then we would be drawing the $100,000, or what it would be then, out of either the property tax or sales tax revenue that we're taking from our taxpayers, right?
Correct.
So rather than capture.
Or control, but in theory, yes, some other funding source that's not federally assigned, yes.
Public finance or whatever.
Correct.
So rather than, than take backs in the tax money that they've paid the federal government out of this community in the form of this ARPA grant, to use for these same things that we would want ostensibly to then incorporate into our tax base, I, I just, I don't understand, I mean, this isn't, we're not taxing our citizens $100,000 for that command vehicle. They've already been taxed, and now the federal government's granting it back to us, right?
Yeah, this is basically free money.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I can be dense sometimes, just want to check.
Well, so they did, the federal government went through a calculation, estimated, it was, it's estimated what every city lost in revenues during the pandemic. That's how that $10.2 million was derived. And that's what the federal government then allocated to each community, whether, I mean, we didn't have to apply for it, it was just given to us.
Jim, we owe you apology because this was so painful when it was occurring, that we went through it over and over, and we should have done a better job of bringing you up to speed on how that happened.
But I mean, it just seems to me that, that this is federal money that they're offering in the form of tax payments we've already made to the federal government, now they're offering to give us back. And for items that, that are deemed critical enough that we want to do it, like the command vehicle's a really good one, the Magnolia Park bid flexibility's a really good one. If it turns out that the bid on Magnolia Park is higher than anticipated, which has been happening lately with inflation and all, then if we don't take this money out of ARPA, then we'd be looking at raising taxes to, to cover the $650,000, right?
That's correct.
Right, so I say, let's vote and take our tax money back from the feds and, and not derive more tax money from our citizens and municipal tax to cover these same projects.
So I had one question sort of related to that. You're, you gave some very aggressive numbers here. I would guess that we're going to come in with some additional funding available.
So I referenced that if you look at this remaining balance of $178,530, after, let's just say, council says, yes, I want to do everything that's on this list. Moving forward, my plan for how we would handle everything else. So my plan would be to come back to the council in May, likely that second meeting in May. Knowing that.
You have 18 months to spend it.
Well, we, at that point, we will have six months in which to finalize obligation.
Right.
And make sure that we get it assigned to something. So at, in May, that is kind of the last time that I would come to you all with a proposal on how we would obligate all remaining balances. So anything that's left over here, anything that's left over on the remaining balance, we should know where we are on Magnolia. We are monitoring a couple of the current projects to see where those are coming in as well. There is almost $350,000 in interest that is not included in any of these numbers here because it's just interest. So it's not money that we've received as far, as part of our allocation. But that gets layered on top of that 178, and so I will be back in front of you in May with kind of a final proposal for your consideration to close us out on obligation.
John?
The Magnolia Park, the reserve, I guess, sort of, is fine. When will we know for sure whether that's all defeated?
Yes, so may I call on our community experiences team on timeline for that?
I believe we perceived a bid timeline that, we'll give that to us in, in the middle of February. So if I can confirm that, I know Dusty's been working on that with Jennifer Cook.
And then the other question, the residential rehab grant, the positive grant, is that a one-time thing? Or are we possibly looking at additional moving forward?
So there is, so this is kind of one-time. We have additional funds in our five-year forecast that would, in theory, have more funding recurring outside of this $100,000. For ARP money, we are proposing just one time. Mindy, is there anything else to add from that? Okay.
John?
Is this whole list on a to-do list already regardless of what the funding is?
Some of them are included in our five-year forecast now, and this will help us accelerate those. Some of them are things that we knew we needed to do and have not. So if you look at those two assessments at the bottom, those are really important strategy, long-term items because they're so long-term, they hadn't even made it into the five-year forecast yet. And so, yes, some of these are already in our planning, some of them are just accelerated.
Okay, so many of them were projects we were going to do very likely.
All of these at some point have to, have to get done. Whether that means five years down the road and fund it out of a different fund.
Second question, the $350,000 in interest, is that subject to clawback also? Do we, do we have that, do we have to, any money that we've earned on the funds?
Correct.
We have to also come up with them?
Correct.
Or otherwise, that goes back?
I will provide this council with a plan to obligate every single dollar.
Okay, so we're talking about, based on what you, if you throw in that interest, we're talking about almost half a million dollars?
Correct.
Is what we're going to?
Assuming everything comes in right here, yes.
If everything came in like it did, we still got a half million, okay, next.
Just real quick, so to echo something John said. So if the residential rehabilitation grant is an abject failure, will the pilot, being a pilot, the $100,000 will have provided us that experience? And then we won't have to go into city tax dollars to fund it?
Correct, then we would remove it from the five-year forecast.
Okay, okay, thank you.
P G?
Yeah, could you please go back to the completed project list?
Sure.
Andrew Brown Park Best Monuments that we completed, where is that included in which item?
That is not, that was not ARPA-funded.
It's not?
No. You're talking about the new, the new monuments?
Right.
Yeah, no, that was not ARPA.
Okay, where did that come out from?
I do not know the answer, but I can get that for you.
CRDC.
CRDC?
CRDC.
The brain trust speaks.
John?
I forgot what else to ask. Can you go back to the fire program?
It may have been related to what Jim was talking about.
I might come back.
So do you have a wish list for that May 20, mid-May meeting?
I remember. Sorry.
I, what I can tell you, my initial, my initial leaning is applying that towards our capital replacement to hedge our bets there on the increases that we're seeing on our fleet. However, between now and then, I know, you know, there's going to be some projects that are coming in. We have some projects that are eligible to apply those funds to, so.
Okay.
Yes.
John?
It might be more of Mindy's question, but the, when we allocated some of the amount for the business and system program,
Sure.
have we completely stopped getting calls about those? Because I recently got a, a call saying, hey, I remember you talked about this, is, are those still available and so, so, so? But what's the status on that? Is this?
Sure, we've had one business that inquired about it, but we did inform them that that program had come to an end. That's the only call we've had since then, probably because the application's down, so it's no longer available for people to.
That's what I mean.
Uh, Brian?
Hey Tracy, on some of these numbers, I, I know that's an estimate. When were you saying you'll come to us with more concrete numbers? Or are they pretty close? I honestly, this is just me, but for our two chiefs, like the command vehicle one seems to be on the low side, but I could be wrong, and I'm just curious. I think, kind of going to what Mark was saying before, will we get it to the same place as if we were to buy something new, right? Like, rather than, like, let's not, let's not upgrade it only halfway and then have to buy something new in a few years, right? So how close are we on this $100,000?
Um, we actually have gotten an equipment price list, it's pretty close, that's how we came to that number, that's just how it is.
Okay, so it is pretty close, okay, thank you.
John?
Metro Crest and woven, do you know where we are on those? Are they using up those funds pretty well? I mean, are we going to, are we going to probably expend all those?
Yes.
I was just making sure those were getting utilized like we.
Yes, they are required to provide quarterly reports to us, so we are fairly, we're very up to date on where they are with their spending, and we are monitoring those.
It feels pretty good that we would, those will actually get used up. Okay.
Yes.
All right.
In fact, I had a meeting with the new executive director of woven today, so, yes, I feel like we're, we're in a good spot.
Okay, good.
My professors, thank you.
They are, they are.
Mark?
Could you go back to the, to the last slide? With the electric, EV fleet infrastructure strategy assessment. Now, I don't want to minimize any consultant's work, but really, what, what is, what is this going to look like? I mean, if we say we want, you know, five Level 3 chargers at the new service center, I mean, it's just electrical engineering, it's upsizing the panels and.
Just.
Yeah. You just press a button, you know? That's what everybody says when we're, when we're doing buildings, oh, it's just pressing a few buttons, it's done.
That's all you do, right?
Yeah. But I mean, what does, what does this assessment really look like?
Yeah.
I, you can jump in here, I can. So we, we did a previous assessment to determine how many of our vehicles could potentially become electric vehicles. So based off of that, now we're really going to decide, okay, which ones are we realistically going to be able to convert? This, this study is anticipated to determine based off what fleet we potentially can convert. This, this study is anticipated to determine, based off what fleet we potentially can convert to EV, what does the infrastructure look like to accommodate that fleet in Capel and locations of, what are we gonna need to install at city facilities for our vehicle, the infrastructure, for the fleet, for the service center or the fire stations? How many do we need, those sorts of things? Just, it's high-level feasibility of what it's gonna look like for our, the infrastructure needs for, for the fleet. It's really what it's intended to do. You gotta give us a plan of how we're gonna approach each, each facility, if that's what we want to do.
Is it also gonna include an assessment of whether you're gonna go 100% by usage or have a mixed-use fleet in each department?
Correct, yes.
I will say, one thing I would add is, you know, you hear, was, is the grid sufficient to support all the electric vehicles? That's one of the things this, this study would answer for us, help us answer. What do we need to do, what do we need to do, or what do, what do we need someone else to do to provide the infrastructure, the redundancy? Do we need backup? Do we need, so it's, it's really to answer all those questions around the infrastructure associated with a partial EV fleet.
Do we have any EV vehicles?
We have.
We have two, one fully electric, one's a plug-in hybrid.
And we do have charging station?
We have a level-two charging station at the service center.
Don, please.
Just an idea, it, would the, anything, any of the soft costs or anything with the service center up, or service center project that we have coming down the pipe, would that be eligible for any of that? Like, I'm thinking about these other half-million-dollar funds or anything. Would that be an eligible project to put toward?
Yes. So the revenue loss category is very broad. And almost any governmental function falls into revenue loss.
I guess that's a thought, if we, you know, whatever gap we end up having, we got that big project coming, could we throw it toward some of the soft costs or something that's coming up relatively quick this year?
What are the chances that it's gonna come in over budget?
Right, right, yeah.
All right, anybody else?
Did you get what you needed from us?
Is this, is this list acceptable to council for us to move forward with in its current iteration?
I mean, if you don't have any other list, right, this is all you have, right?
I do not have another list.
Right. So I'm okay for it.
And there's another approximately half a million dollars still out there.
Right.
Use it or lose it.
A lot of thumbs up there.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Tracy.
Jim, and I apologize, this was such, the concept of the federal government giving money out for use was, was kind of difficult to get our hands around.
Oh, I know. I mean, we pay a lot of taxes, that was community, I'm glad to get some of it back.
And then it has to fit into certain categories and.
Right, yeah.
All right, item C is a discussion on our upcoming council retreat agenda. We've been, has everyone met, or has most everyone met with Randy, or talked to him at least? Okay. He's gonna work, he's gonna be facilitating, but just to give you guys an idea, part of the idea tonight was, I know that a couple of you have expressed some specific requests aside from the breaking karate boards. But Kevin, I think you had something that you wanted to bring up at the retreat?
No, I mean.
Think hard.
Think hard.
You want me, why don't you think about it, Jim? Mike said you had something you wanted to bring up.
Yeah, I wanted to revisit the code compliance issue and kind of, you know, make sure that, on the one hand, I mean, there's plenty of benevolence with a lot of our faith institutions helping people that just, you know, they're behind keeping their yard up or whatever. And I think our folks in code compliance know the difference between that and someone that's just a genuine scofflaw that's just ignoring the rules and that, oh, yes.
No, no.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm trying to get.
Just ignoring the rules and everything. And I, I just think, I think it has gotten worse. I think Bob Hager made a really good point about how, you know, if we don't get ahead of that, that, that could be, become a larger problem for us. I'd like to look at that issue. I'd like to look at the issue of the, like, time periods within which we can put out holiday decorations. Other cities have enacted those ordinances and, and I'd like to at least take a look at that. We had a few issues with that this last season. I'm not suggesting no Santas or anything, I'm just saying, I think we ought to at least take a look at some reasonable time periods. And, and then I'm a little bit less ambitious about Old Town.
Okay. So one of the things that fits in with your discussion about the code compliance, and it's kind of an obtuse connection, but it's our rental program in town, our rental house program. It kind of, it goes into the code compliance and, and the whole thing. So we'll roll those two together, together, because we do want to have a discussion. And realize that at a retreat, we're not, we're trying to get feedback from, from all of us so that we know how we're, you know, what our opinions are. And this code compliance, or excuse me, not code compliance, the rental program, I didn't, I've never even given it a thread of thought until I started listening to, you know, some of the discussion on it. And I think that we do need to have a discussion on it, you know? And maybe we don't need to make a decision in January or even, you know, in the first half of the year or even next, this year, but I think we need to be prepared for that, you know, should the, the trends continue the way that they're going right now. And so it's just good to be aware. Kevin, I was gonna ask you, you had made some comments and, one of the things that I've been facilitating behind the scenes is the discussions with Encore about hardening the power grid.
Okay.
Are we, do we still want to have those discussions? You know, we've had, we've had KITA and we've been out to Encore and visited. Do we, do we want to continue that? I don't think educating ourselves is a bad thing at all. I don't know what we can really do, but I'm, I'm still open to, to options there. Because I do believe that one of our responsibilities is to provide as reliable city services and power is not exactly our domain, but we can influence it. Kevin?
You know, speaking to that, you know, the fact that several of us had an opportunity to go visit one of their, their center and, and quite frankly, learn a little bit more about, you know, what we're, what, what power looks like in Capel. I do think that we need to continue to educate ourselves, but I, I almost think that it's important that we almost start like an education campaign with our community, because the fact that what we learned there, the fact that our reliability is higher than average, our, you know, the, the fact that we're on more than, you know, like.
Let's, let's take that one to the retreat then.
I, I actually thought it was very interesting, because I think that we have all these feelings about like, well, I feel like my power is off and stuff. But when we started to see the, the hard numbers and stuff, I, I think it painted a different picture than what we were, some of us feel. And so, you know, that data is important, so let's continue that conversation and maybe look at what, maybe an education piece.
And we can, we can see what else Encore can offer us in terms of, of education. I know that the ERCOT, let me get this right, the chairman of ERCOT or the president, CEO of ERCOT is gonna be speaking to the North Dallas Chamber of Commerce at the end of January. And I'm gonna really try to go to that. So, you know, maybe that's, maybe that's something that we can move up the line with ERCOT. One of the questions I want to ask ERCOT is what they're doing to increase the number of power generation stations. And I think the answer is it's out of their jurisdiction. I think that's the answer. But, you know, that's where our real issue is. Okay, anyway, so we'll, we'll, we'll keep that one on the agenda. One of the other ones is, is the drought contingency plan. Mike has kind of let us know where he's wanting to head. And I think we need to have that discussion before we start to implement it. And so we'll, we'll keep that one on the agenda. Let's see. We're gonna have a discussion on debt modeling, which will include our upcoming facility construction, beltline, renovation, and the service center. So we'll go through our, our debt modeling and where we're, where it looks like we're standing with those three projects going on. This is informational, it's usually very good to keep track. We usually do it about once a year, just to make sure that we keep our, our INS rates down, you know, where we want them and, and don't overtax the, the general fund. So those are always good discussions. We'll talk about the, what the FY '25 budget's gonna look like. And part of that will be the 240 goals prioritization, which Tracy is supposed to be getting out to us.
It went out last week.
No.
Not to me.
Not to me.
I didn't get it.
Who did I send that to?
I don't know.
Somebody owes me. I, I apologize, that went out on December, uh, not December, January 2nd, but.
Did you get one back for me?
Did y'all get it?
I wonder who that went to then.
Oh, okay, none of us got it, did you get it?
I think I got it. Why are you holding that one? Well, because I have to admit that I haven't done it, so.
I will either resend or send for the first time this evening.
Okay.
Like, I actually was on the lookout for it, because I'm usually late to it.
So it's a good thing this was on the agenda tonight. Otherwise you would have been hounding us at the last minute, we'd have been going, we didn't get it. And, and this is the, we do this, you know, just to let, kind of get an idea of where each one of us stands on all the, the items coming up for this, next year, for 2025. And we'll take a look at our calendar for the fiscal year '24. It's kind of funny, we're all ready, a third into the fiscal year. And so we'll take a look at what the rest of the year's gonna be.
Can I ask a question, Tracy?
You may.
The, the thing that is going to be sent out or be resent, are we still using the same grading scale and everything that, that we've used before? Because I, I remember we had a very detailed discussion at the last retreat about that rating and, and, you know, kind of leaning a little bit more into that rating system. But I just wanted to confirm that it's gonna be the, it's the rating system that I now understand and, and excited about using it, so.
I have identified the issue and technology one, me zero. I sent it to Mike and Kent. So that is why none of you all have responded to it.
What'd you get then?
I know, I got, I sent out some. I'm sure they're like, like, who's this guy? Yeah, Capel's getting into a.
Did I not send that? Did I have blind copy of it? Okay, I will resend, my apologies.
No, resend, send to the group.
Yes.
All right, so we'll also have a, we'll have a discussion on the economic development policy that Tracy was talking about a little bit earlier. And then we'll always open it up to future council considerations just after we have the, the weekend discussion. Is there anything else that, that you guys would like to add?
I had one thing, go ahead. No, no worries, you should, you have any? So I saw that the covers for the police cruisers was on the ARPA list.
Parking lot, yes.
Yes, sir. So where are we on moving forward with like the dryers for the bulletproof vests like that? Did we approve that, are we still looking at it? Or with the rebuilding of the locker room and all that over at the police department?
I, I'd have to ask, I see Mike nodding his head back there.
Yeah, we, we received direction to move forward and so we, we're a gate worth an architect.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Is there any part of that that we could get within the $500,000 of the remaining funds?
Yeah, I think it's.
Like some of the equipment or something?
Yeah, as Tracy said, just about anything we're talking about, budget-wise, projects to spend this money on is eligible because of the revenue, revenue loss requirement.
I mean, nobody should have to wear a sweaty, you know, wet bulletproof vest on the next shift because it didn't dry out properly, but if we get ARPA to pay for it, doesn't seem like a bad deal to me. Anyway, it's just a thought.
I like to defer.
Aw, thank you.
She didn't.
I know, I did, I've had it since he started talking a long time ago.
I thought she was drying it off.
Not that you were talking a lot, I'm sorry, the first time you spoke, sorry, that's not what I was trying to communicate.
As opposed to the fourth time.
But, um, well, you mentioned, like, not being optimistic about Old Town. My question is, is Old Town on our list?
It is not.
And is that something we should revisit and continue the conversation about? What are the guardrails? So.
Like?
Well, last time there was a conversation around alcohol, no alcohol, was someone gonna take that forward? But I would think that, I could be wrong, but I would think staff, Mike, it might be helpful for them to have some guardrails to know what we're looking to have in Old Town and whatever's left there. I don't know. Look at Mindy.
So I, I'm not, this is gonna sound negative and I don't mean it, I mean it to, so you want to have another Old Town discussion?
We don't, we don't have to, it would just be nice to know, I mean, I, I think it's, nothing came from last time. And so what happens is when something comes forward about Old Town, we all kind of look at each other up on the dais and we're trying to figure out, like, does it fit? Does it not fit? Is that what we want there, is it not what we want there? And I think we should have, just like a 2040 plan, we should have a plan for, or guardrails around, what does Old Town, right? It shifted over the years and over the, you know, the council members that we've had at the table. So I think just having some clarity.
So could I, so maybe if we had a discussion about what does the Old Town plan look like today?
It's fine, yeah, and it opens up the discussion.
Okay. Kevin?
Ditto, because that was one of the things I was, I was gonna talk about. So, yeah, I 100% support that. I just wanted to reiterate that I, I do agree with your assessment that I think that there was a vision for Old Town 20 years ago and that vision has shifted as the councils have come through. I don't think this council has a vision for Old Town. And I think that's, that's what we need to develop. And I understand that, you know, there are gonna be changes and stuff like that, but we need to at least be moving in that direction. The second thing I, I think was, Mike said something very interesting. I can't remember what it was in the discussion, but, you know, we're, we're talking about the pending, you know, the lawsuit about 3.334 and all that stuff. We've talked about a lot of stuff like what happens, you know, you know, if we lose that and we lose that revenue stream and stuff. But I remember he asked a question, well, what if we win? Have we ever sat down and talked about what that vision might look like if we do win? And, you know, maybe that, that might be a discussion for a future, you know, retreat. But I don't think it's a bad thing for us to have a discussion, like, what would our vision be? Would we, you know, take all that money and redeploy it into improving services? Would we reduce tax rate? Like, I think having a, maybe a, a general idea and a plan for what that might look like either way. Because I've sat on this council for almost three years and that, this lawsuit has just been looming over the whole time, so we've never been able to formulate what to do if A or B happens. So I'll let you kind of determine what that looks like, but.
I, I think is, immediate answer would be, if we win, we will have a tremendous amount of flexibility.
Absolutely.
And I think it's gonna come down to, you know, there are some, there are some really strategic reasons why you don't want to cut your tax rate down to zero.
But, absolutely.
But, you know, you also need to be very careful that you balance your, your income and your revenues. So it's a good discussion, Kevin.
I, I just, I think it's fair, like, because this, I think about Old Town and like applying the same logic, right? Like, when things come up, we're not quite sure how to go with old. Well, when this gets resolved, what's gonna be our, our plan moving forward? So, and then the last thing I wanted to talk about was our current communication strategy. You know, we've got, we've got, I know we authorized a, like a new staff member in the budget. So, you know, how is that being deployed, what's that look like? I know we had council members in the past, you know, have concerns about citizens, aren't hearing us off. So could we look at other strategies? Is there, you know, newer technologies to look at in terms of getting messaging out? You know, I think if we, you know, we look at Capel as, you know, we have our smart city board and stuff, are we utilizing technology to the best of our ability to keep our citizens informed and engaged with what's going? informed and engaged with what's going on? So that might be a discussion about that. I know we had a, I know at one retreat, we had a discussion about what does that look like? But kind of more like, would we be willing to, you know, commit funds, you know, commence capital to improving our communication, you know, up to what amount? What that, what might that look like? So I think those would be my three things. It'd be interesting to discuss.
You put down lots of words and I have to write them, so it takes me a minute.
I, I've been totally talking a lot.
I got it. Anybody have anything else to comment on? Rihanna?
I have one more thing, sorry, but I don't know of anybody else. Did you have something?
No, ma'am.
I don't know where this fits and Kent, I may be looking to you and Tracy and is, there's a lot happening around cybersecurity, ransomware attacks, and I know that Jared's been working on it. There's been some discussions. I know it's not something for us to necessarily be a part of that solution, but I'm wondering if somewhere we could get an update. And I don't know if it's at retreat or meeting, but just as in kind of our plan of what are we doing from the standpoint of safety, security of data? I don't know. I don't know if anybody else would be interested in that, but we know that a lot of cities have been attacked and that would be something to think about.
I'm on board with that.
Yeah, I need to. We would probably look at a future close session.
Okay, perfect, just to put that on your radar.
I've got it.
Thank you.
And I've got one, but I'm gonna defer it till later, so.
Okay.
And it, because it kind of kicks off with the, a parallel to the EV stuff that we were talking about, I'm, I'm really wanting to hear an update from our smart cities on, on the autonomic vehicle that we've been talking about. But that'll be later. All right, anybody have anything else? Well, thank you very much. The time is seven twenty-two PM. We're adjourned from the regular, or from work session. We'll be joining in at the regular session at seven thirty. Is there? Good evening and happy new year, everybody. The time is seven thirty-one PM and we're gonna move into the regular session of the Capel City Council. Just as a reminder, any persons wishing to speak during our citizens' appearance or any of the public hearings must, must sign the appropriate registers located outside the council chambers and list your residence address. Tonight, Councilmember Don Carroll will give the invocation and then we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance, so please remain standing. Councilman Carroll?
Thank you, Mayor. Let's pray. Father, we come to you tonight. We are thankful for this new year that you have given us. We are thankful for this community that you have placed us in. We continue to thank you for all the blessings you bestow upon us, including all the material blessings, but more than that, Lord, we thank you for the blessing of relationships that you have created in this community and in this chamber. We are grateful that you have seen fit to put us together as a community. And Father, we ask that you instill in our hearts a spirit of being servants, being willing to wash the feet of our neighbors, to learn how to love our neighbors. And Father, we ask specifically tonight on this meeting that you bring peace and calm into this chamber, that you give us a spirit of wisdom and you guide us as we make decisions in agreement or disagreement. Father, just, we ask your blessings on this meeting this evening. Thank you for this community. Thank you for always loving us and always taking care of us. We ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
I'd like to ask Mr. Michael Higgins and guests, please join me down front.
I come with an entourage.
Come on over, guys. I don't normally do this, but what's your name? Ben? Hi, I'm Mayor Mays. And?
Ethan.
Ethan, hi, glad to meet you guys. As you can tell from the applause, I think everyone's a little bit in awe of you. So without further ado, I'm gonna go ahead and do the proclamation and then we're gonna have a few things to say and really appreciate you living in Capel and representing us so well. Whereas Michael Higgins, on December twelfth, twenty twenty-three, a Capel resident, not only participated in the twenty twenty-three Antarctic Ice Marathon, but won the race in Union Glacier, Antarctica. Whereas he is a esteemed member of the Capel Running Club and whereas his training allows him to finish twenty-six point two miles of arduous running through snow and ice in below freezing weather. And whereas this race presents a truly formidable and genuine Antarctic challenge with underfoot conditions comprising snow and ice throughout, an average wind chill temperature of minus twenty degrees C and the possibility of strong katabic winds to contend with. And whereas he completed the race in four hours, one minute at an altitude of seven hundred meters, making him the first place winner in a field of competitors from around the world. And whereas the Antarctic Ice Marathon is located six hundred miles from the South Pole with winds blowing at a steady ten to twenty-five knots. Whereas setting example for his three young sons, Michael has exhibited the discipline, perseverance, and grit needed to be an award-winning athlete. And whereas in recognition of his extraordinary accomplishment, the citizens of Capel wish to extend their heartfelt gratitude and appreciation to Michael Higgins for a feat that very few have accomplished, winning the Antarctic Ice Marathon. I think there's only about twenty winners to date. Now therefore, I, Wes Mays, Mayor of the City of Capel, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, January ninth, twenty twenty-four, as Michael Higgins Appreciation Day in the City of Capel and urge all citizens and employees to join me and the city council in honoring Mr. Higgins for his accomplishments of winning the Antarctic Ice Marathon. A witness thereof, I've set my hand and cause a seal of the City of Capel to be affixed this night, day of January twenty twenty-four. So here's, I'm gonna go ahead and present this to you because I'm having trouble holding it and talking at the same time. So congratulations.
Thanks, sir.
And I did a little research and I found out that one of the things that winning this marathon allows you to do is to win the Seven Continent Marathon Award. So I'm gonna hand you the microphone in just a minute and I'd like to hear where you are on, on that quest and what your plans are to finish that. So council, did anybody have, uh, Mayor Protem John June?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, Mr. Higgins, congratulations. You know, I debate when it's hot out there whether to run or not and whether it's, when it's cold, whether to run or not, and let alone minus twenty degree would not be something that I have in mind. But with that being said, you being one of the Capel Running Club, I imagine that you are preparing the rest of them, like Julia Waters, to prepare for the next similar Antarctic run. So I look forward to many of you, or also thank you for putting us, the Capel, on the map and I look forward to many of the Running Club members to be putting Capel on the map as well. So thank you again.
Again, I have trouble, I have trouble running, running my little five K, so thank you very much. Here, here's the microphone. You have anything to say to us?
Well, listen, thank you guys for all the support. As you can tell, I get a lot of training with managing these three boys. In addition to, to running, I've burned just a sweat actually just keeping my youngest away from the microphone now. But to your, to your question, Mayor, I kind of went the wrong way. This is only the second international marathon I've done, so I actually have to get all the other continents out of the way. So that one may, uh, that may take a little while, but it was, it was a real privilege for me to represent Texas. Nobody could believe a guy from Texas where it's one oh five and one oh seven was conditioned to this. So I, I left Antarctica with an expression and I'll leave with all of you as well, which is Texas fire will beat Antarctic ice any day of the week.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We're expecting our first grandchild in about a month and I'm, it's gonna be eye-opening Item number seven is a proclamation designating January thirteenth, twenty twenty-four as Korean-American Day. I'd like to ask Mayor Protem John June to come forward, as well as we're very honored and to have this distinguished Consul General of, of Korea here with us today, Myung Kim. Sir, if you'd come forward. I'd also like to ask the delegations from the Korean societies of Dallas and Fort Worth to come forward. Everybody can come on down? So it is really great to see everybody here. We thank you for coming out. It's an honor to be able to, to present and really appreciate you being here. Whereas the City of Capel celebrates the contributions of Korean Americans to our nation, region, city, and surrounding community. region, city, and surrounding communities, reaffirming our commitment to advance racial equality and representation of Korean Americans. And whereas, January 13th, 1903 commemorates and recognizes the first courageous Korean immigrants that arrived in Hawaii, initiating the first large wave of Korean immigration to the United States. These immigrants and their descendants planted roots and have continued to thrive in the United States through hard work, strong families, and community support. And whereas, achievements and contributions of Korean Americans, including recent immigrants, can be seen in economic strength, cultural diversity, and in all facets of American life, including politics, industry, entrepreneurship, volunteerism, the arts, education, and in various branches of the United States Armed Services. And whereas, 2024 will mark the 71st anniversary of the signing of the Mutual Defense Treaty between the United States and the Republic of Korea in 1953. And whereas, Korean Americans have built and strengthened the alliance between the United States and the Republic of Korea, fostering peace on the Korean Peninsula. And whereas, the official recognition of Korean American Day is a significant way that we can celebrate the invaluable contributions of our Korean American community and work in creating a culture of belonging in a more equitable and socially just city. Now, therefore, I, Wes Mays, Mayor of the City of Capella, and on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim January 13th, 2024, as Korean American Day in the City of Capella, Texas. A witness thereof, I've set my hand and caused a seal of the City of Capella to be affixed this night, day of January 2024. So I would like to ask representatives of the Korean Society of Dallas and Fort Worth to step forward so I can present the proclamation.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mayor, councilmembers, city staff, thank you for the recognition and the proclamation. And as mentioned in the proclamation, it's been 121 years since the first Koreans set foot in Hawaii. It's been almost 20 years since the Congress recognized Korean American Day, the official Korean American Day, as being January 13. Over the 121 years, Korean Americans have contributed in many different ways, especially here in North Texas as well. Many of you know Harry Hines area, what used to be crime, high, highly crime, and place to avoid. It is now a $1 billion generating economic power in North Texas. It generates just as much as North Park Mall for a modern pop stores. It is now considered a Koreatown, designated as Koreatown by the state, as well as, if you go a little bit west, east of us, Carrollton, Texas, is also a place where it used to be a dead block. Only DMV used to be there, but it is now a vibrant economic powerhouse for Carroll City of Carrollton, and it attracts residents and visitors from all over the place for them to visit and shop and dine as well. We are having the Korean American Day ceremony this Saturday, January 13th, at the Carrollton Elite Center at 2:00. I invite all of you to be there, to celebrate with us, and join us, and really be with us, and celebrate this special day for us. Thank you again for the recognition and the proclamation, Mayor, councilmembers.
Good evening, everybody. First of all, I want to express my sincere gratitude to the City of Capella, including the mayor and all the councilmembers to designate and proclaim the Korean American Day officially in the City of Capella. City of Capella has been always the core of our Korean American community in DFW area. As the Consulman John mentioned, our first immigration to Hawaii, 121 years ago, Korean American society in the state have faced many challenges and obstacles and difficulties, but we, we overcome those things, and we made a great Korean American society in the state. And they try to become the better neighbors and better members of the community for the state of America. I have no doubt that they have to work together with the City of Capella to make the place, a better place to live for the many years to come. Thank you.
I am grateful for the recognition of Korean American Day in Capella. Today marks proud and unforgettable day for our Korean community. Thank you for your support, acknowledgement of the culture, and also of the Korean American in our community. The Korean community wanted to continue to good relationship with the City of Capella. Capella is family community for lifetime connect, high quality life, and active community. Many Koreans choose Capella because of its excellent school district. The STEM members are exceptionally kind, contributing to the highly positive reputation of Capella among the Korean community. Once again, I thank Mayor Wes Mays, the city councilmembers, and all those involved proclaiming Korean American Day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, item number eight on our agenda is a smart city board recommendation, which will be postponed until the January 23rd meeting. So moving on to item number nine is our citizens' appearance. Persons wishing to speak must sign the register and list your address. Presentations by individuals shall be limited to two minutes each. An individual's speaker time may be extended for an additional two minutes with the approval of the majority of the councilmembers present. Person signed up to speak will be called in the order that they signed up. No personal attacks. Many speakers shall be made against any member of the council, mayor, individual, group, or corporation. There will be no comments or deliberations from the city council due to the Texas Open Meetings Record Act. Once the timer sounds at two minutes, the city secretary will cut in and make the request to the mayor and council if they would like to expend the speaker's time for an additional two minutes. We did have one person signed up to speak tonight, and that is Sean Fields, Mr. Fields. He was going to speak on the Michael Higgins Day, so I'm guessing that he may have left. Seeing that we have nobody signed up to speak, we'll move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is routine in nature and is generally enacted in one motion. Items may be pulled for consideration by members of the council. These items have been scrolling through the screen. Council, is there any desire to pull or have any questions on any members of the, any of the items of the consent agenda? Councilmember Nevels?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve consent agenda items A through J.
Seconded by Councilmember Carroll. All in favor?
Walker, Heinoza Smith, Carroll, Nevels, John, Matthew Hill, in favor and nonopposed to the motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item number 11 is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing and ask Mr. Steer to read it into the record.
Mayor, council, good evening. This is item number 11 on your agenda. It is a public hearing to consider approval of PD 210 R3 SF9, Lot 45 Block 1 Anderson Edition, 309 K Street, a zoning change request from PD 210 SF9 to PD 210 R3 SF9 to consider allowing a 54.3% lot coverage in lieu of the 35% allowed on .21 acres located on Lot 45 Block 1 Anderson Edition at the request of Lena Miri, the property owner. The plat for the subject property was approved in February 2019. The building permit was approved in August 2021, and the house has been constructed. It was not until the final inspection, when staff was alerted to the coverage requirement not being adhered to. Staff researched the permit history and determined that it was issued without noting the building exceeded the minimum or the maximum coverage requirement of 35%. The house still meets all required minimum front, side, and rear yard setbacks, and the request is to allow a 54.3% lot coverage. Here are the elevations of the home that were approved, and a photo of the constructed house. Thirty notices were sent out within 200 feet, and we received no written responses in favor and none in opposition. We sent out 182 additional courtesy notices and did not receive any responses. We did have a few phone calls, wondering what was going on, and after letting them know, there was no opposition. In fact, we had one caller just opposite the boundary, or the boundary of the, or just outside the boundary at 324 K Street, state that he was in support of the request. At the Planning and Zoning Commission, the owner at 316 K Street stated that he was in support, and another speaker stated that they were in favor of the request as well, in addition to representatives of the applicant. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval unanimously of this request with no outstanding conditions, and this will bring the subject property into compliance if approved. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is in the audience as well.
Councilmember Carroll?
Thank you, Mayor. Just for clarification, so it's just an oversight during the permitting process, is that right?
Yes.
The plans were approved as originally submitted and everything, it was just an oversight?
Correct, correct. Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. So councilmember just asked that question, and you said it was an oversight. But for something like this, why, why did it take so long to recognize that it should have been only 35% and gave 54.3%? I'm trying to understand.
Well, it was at the time of the final inspection, it was brought to our attention that it looked a little bit larger. We went back and reviewed what had been approved in 2021, and I did the measurements, and it did exceed the maximum lot coverage.
So, yeah, so I'm trying to understand where in the process we, I guess, in essence, failed to recognize that the permit should not have been permitted for the 54.3 lot coverage.
So it wasn't realized until after the house was constructed, and it was at final inspection. Wherein the permit should we have caught the coverage requirement is early on. It's, it's one of our first steps in the permit review is making sure it's compliant with the zoning. And the zoning consists of setbacks, lot coverage, parking, and a couple of other things as well.
So I, I understand you just said that it was at the, and after it was built that we discovered that it was allowed bigger, more coverage than it should have been, right?
Correct.
Can you just kind of walk through the process as to how, when we might have been, or should have caught the process at what point, other than the final inspection? Do we not go inspect it at any time until the final inspection?
Well, so there is a form board survey, or form board inspection that we, we review to make sure it's in conformance with the plans, and it meets our setback requirements. So at that time, we could have also discovered that it was exceeding the maximum coverage requirements.
And we didn't at that time because?
Because when you go out on site, you have the approved plans on site. You review the footprint to make sure it's in accordance with the approved plans. They don't do a full review of the plans when they're out there doing the inspection. So it technically should have been caught early on in the review process.
Okay. Any other similar situation that we've had in the past, or is this one out of the blue?
This, this is the first one that I've been alerted to that, that was a lot coverage requirement being, being missed. So we have re-reviewed our permit, our checklist, and so we've made sure that that is included as a step in, in our permit review.
So as far as the option goes right now, do we have any other option, other than approving this change?
I would recommend the change.
But I mean, is there any other option?
There, there is an option to deny, but...
But that would be on us for making the mistake of approving it.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Matthew?
Thank you, Mayor. Can you, I'm also trying to understand our building permit process. After the foundation is poured in, do we go inspect?
We, we inspect the foundation to make sure that it's in compliance with their foundation plans, and this was in compliance with their foundation plans.
But it is taking over rule or taking more coverage?
Not than, than the approved plans. So the plans were approved in error, and the subsequent building pad was built in accordance with those plans. So it wasn't until final, the final, final inspection, when we were alerted to it being, exceeding the maximum coverage.
Okay, so the foundation was correct because the plan was incorrect?
Correct.
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nevels?
Mayor, I just want to kind of follow up on Councilmember, what are you saying? So if we deny, basically, that would mean that the house is out of compliance and would need to be changed or altered. I mean, that's really our other course of action, correct?
Yes.
And understanding the recommendation is that we not, that we approve, not penalize the homeowner for a clerical issue, because it's a, it's a significant hardship that they would be facing. So am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much for that clarification.
Council, any other, Councilmember Walker?
And as far as the setbacks, you said those are fine?
Yes, sir.
And the parking's fine?
Yes.
So the only issue is the lot coverage?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Hill?
You know, quite frankly, if it's within the setbacks, I don't understand why we even have a percentage lot coverage on the books. It just, it doesn't make sense. I mean, you've, you've got your side yard, you've got your front yard, you've got your backyard, and however big the house can be, it, it should be allowed. In my opinion, I think we ought to consider taking a look at that down the road.
I think Mr. Steer will take that under advisement.
Yes, sir.
Now, it is, it reflects the SF9 35% maximum coverage requirement.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Nevels.
This might be a question more for Bob, but just to kind of, want to make sure I understand. So we, by approving this, we're not going to be setting any precedent or anything like that because this is an isolated planned development. Is that correct? I just want to make, I don't know if you can answer it better for Bob or?
Yes, that is correct. Yeah. Each plan.
Thanks for coming down, Bob.
Can I answer a planning question and you get a lead?
You go ahead.
No, he's right. He's right. This guy's right. Yeah, no, you're right.
I just want to make sure that we're not setting up, because it's an isolated planned development, that that would be isolated to this property alone and would not set any other unintended precedent for other homes across the community.
Matt told you was correct, he asked me the same question and I gave him the answer that he gave you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Councilmember Matthews.
Yeah, I have a question for Bob.
I'm going to defer to Matt.
If we don't approve this, what other legal ramifications against the city from the applicant?
Well, if we ask them to alter the building, I guess they could file a claim against the city requesting. The building's been completed, which is kind of the anomaly here. A lot of times, these kinds of issues get discovered during the development process, not necessarily at the end. And so then there is some case law that if the permit's been issued in error, then the permit is void, and the homeowner or the person is not to rely on it, avoid issued permit. And that's been the case law for a really long time in Texas. There are some cases where there's been a stopple applied. There's a case out of South Padre Island where someone built a building and violated the side yard setback. Building was completed. The city of St. South Padre told them they had to tear it down. They sued, claiming that the city was now stopped to enforce that provision of the zoning ordinance. The court agreed with them and said that the city could not prevail and require them to tear it down. Most of us city attorneys don't like that case because it takes away 60 years of case law in Texas, but there is some statutory basis for such activity. We handled a case, our firm did, and Greenville Avenue, where they actually built something in violation of the zoning ordinance, city granted the building permit. They built it, didn't pass final inspection, they sued. We helped defend the city in that case, and they lost, and they had to take it down. So that does happen, so.
Thank you.
And we understand and what we would advise to probably not be the poster child for that lawsuit, and this is a reasonable remedy given what occurred, so.
Council, any other questions? The applicant is in the audience. Does, you've also signed up to speak for the public hearing. You have the opportunity to speak now as the applicant.
Hi, and Happy New Year. I just wanted to say that I did not know about the lot coverage. Like, as Mr. Hill said, as long as I am in the setbacks and I'm just, you know, passing the inspections required, et cetera, I'm fine. And then at final inspection, I was shocked, and I have all my money in cash in that house, $1.2 million in cash other than the lots. So I really wanted to ask you guys if you can help me out and get this approved, please.
Understand, that is a sizable investment, so thank you very much.
It's a big investment, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ma'am, I'm reminded, I'm supposed to ask for your name and address for the record.
Lena Murray, 7116 Sugar Maple Drive in Irving. But soon I will become also, I will live in Capella, I'm moving to Capella.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Persons wishing to speak during the public hearing, assign the register and list your address. You'll be called to speak in the order you've registered. Public hearings are limited to five minutes per speaker. We did have two people sign up to speak. Mason Murray has signed up to speak. Mr. Murray? And I'm not going to forget, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Mason Murray, 310 Stone Ledge, Irving, Texas. I'll be honest, I thought it was a sign-in sheet, not a speaking sheet, so I don't have anything to add. Thank you.
Thank you for keeping it brief. Lena, were you, did you, have you already spoken? You're signed up next.
No, I'm.
You're good, good. Thank you again. All right. Council, it's up to you. Any comments, questions, discussion? Councilmember Nevels.
Thank you, Mayor. I mean, just to be very honest, I think this is an unfortunate hardship that you're facing, and so, you know, obviously I know the city will, you know, remedy this issue so this doesn't happen to another citizen, because I know you're looking forward to enjoying your new home. So with that being said, I'd like to close the public hearing and approve agenda item 11 as stated in the agenda.
Thank you. Seconded by councilmember Walker. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Walker.
I'd like to read, I think, mark, councilmember Hill hit the nail on the head. I really think we should look at this coverage issue. I mean, it seems to me if you build a house within the setback allowance, then the permeable ground that's available is going to be the same as if, you know, I mean, if you're within the setback, that would seem to take into account the amount of drainage, right? Because your foundation's going to be pretty much built up to the setback anyway, so I would encourage you all to take a look at the coverage requirements if we even need it. And obviously, this was not the fault of the homeowner, and wasn't anything that she intended to happen one way or the other, other than just to build her home. So I would certainly favor the relief here, recognizing that it also doesn't create any, a waiver of any particular requirement.
The other thing is be very careful about making that comment about that tonight during this case. One of the things that your engineering department will tell you, that it's more than just about, it's massive building, it's, there's some other things that are in that calculation, as well as the engineering. When the plat was done, it was based on the impervious surface. And so that drainage might have to be redone. Now, I know new development or redevelopment, certainly you may want to change what the housing products are, but I would caution you about being too quick to change the impervious surface for the whole development. So, but those comments are why you're voting tonight, that's fine, but we shouldn't have that discussion until the proper engineering's been done as well, so.
That's good advice, as always, Bob. Thank you.
I was going to make the comment that I look forward to hearing the report back from staff, so.
Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have.
Any other comments? The motion being made and seconded, all in favor?
Walker, Hinoza Smith, Carol Nevels, John Matthew Hill in favor and non-opposed. The motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Item number 12 is approval of a resolution casting a vote for a fourth member of the Board of Directors of the Dallas Central Appraisal District and authorizing the mayor to sign. There was a runoff in this election, and previously this council had chosen not to vote, so is there a motion on item number 12? Seeing none, it will die on the table. Item number 13. Thank you, Ashley. Item 13 is city manager report, project updates, future agendas, and direction from work session. Mr. Collins.
Thank you, Mayor. In work session, council directed staff to move forward with the ARPA-funded projects as were presented in the work session, so we will do that. The Duck Pond Park improvement, this project is approximately 95% complete. Staff's working with the contractor on a few remaining punch list items, and the park is open to users. South Belt Line, the contractors begun working on the southbound lanes north of the 635 interchange. Dart will be closing Royal Lane this Friday, the 12th, to install the tracks across Royal. They will be closed through the weekend and will reopen on Monday, the 15th, so avoid Royal Lane. Woodhurst Reconstruction, we issued a notice to proceed yesterday. Contractors started to mobilize. Sanitary sewer work will begin later this week. Weather cooperating, looks like it won't, but as soon as weather cooperates, then we'll begin sanitary sewer work. And then, speaking of weather, we are preparing as staff for the potential winter weather that's anticipated late this week and through the next weekend. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item number 14 is the mayor and council reports on recent and upcoming events. The city of Capella Administrative Offices, the Capella Municipal Court, Capella Animal Services, the Biodiversity Education Center, the Capella Arts Center, the Cosby Library and Community Commons, and the Capella Senior and Community Center will be closed Monday, January 15th, in observance of Martin Luther King Junior Day. Regular business hours will resume on Tuesday, January 16th. The Wagon Wheel Tennis Center and Pickleball Center will be open 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and the Core will be open 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. on Monday, January 15th. As a note, for the upcoming May 4th election, the filing period will begin on Wednesday, January 17th, 2024, and go through Friday, February 16th, 2024. Visit the election webpage for more information. Item number 15 are public service announcements concerning items of community interest with no council action or deliberation permitted. Do we have any public service announcements? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number 16, which there was no action necessary from the executive session. And item number 17, there being no further business before this body, we are adjourned at 8:14 p.m.